Just want to say, welcome to our annual town meeting. For those of you who don't know, I'm Joe LaValle, your town moderator. This is certainly a bit different this year, and I can only imagine that over 350 years of these meetings, that there have been many times that they were different. But thank you all for coming and helping get our businesses in order. This is really very nice to see. If you're not a registered voter, you need to be sitting in the rear end of the tent so we don't have issues with voting or possible counts with the exception of our, say, school department or Geraldine Rogers on COA in case there's some questions. They won't vote, I already talked to them. Keep in mind that our new ADA committee is being set up. If you need a support person to accompany you at a meeting like this, that's perfectly fine. We're listed on the town website for more information as well. So as time goes on, look, as we get older, or maybe we have needs and somebody, there's people that want to come, but they say, "I can't just sit there alone." It's okay, we'll deal with it. For Chief Flaherty and our emergency planning head needs to make any comment as to safety, I will politely hold up the meeting for such out of respect for all of our safety. Please keep safe distancing, only use one side of the picnic tables, sitting apart unless couples or family members, masks on, and if you use the mic up here, please keep your mask on. However, if you have a difficulty or a need and you need to remove it or touch the mic, we've got some wipes provided to safely wipe it before using it and a little wastebasket there. Since we're all asked to use hand sanitizers upon entering, it should be okay per Chief Flaherty. He's done a lot of work to help get us to this point, and I just want to say thank you, Bob, and all the members of your group on emergency planning. Chief.
(applause).
Really. He's done a lot. As well as Chief Dukoschak, members of the police department and the DPW, we really, you've been working on this for a couple of months, and I appreciate it.[135.66][135.66](applause). One that I do have to say is, is thank you to our Hatfield Lions Club and Billy Corzor to letting us use this pavilion. We're fortunate to have this place. If I can give them a little push, because they're a nonprofit, as things can hopefully open up, this is a great option for our residents and families to consider for some celebrations or events that were missed, especially for some that have had losses and yet might want a safe gathering. As always, John Novak and your team, thank you so much for your sound work.[168.37][168.37](applause). Now, we will most probably need to hold a special town meeting in the fall to deal with any finances that will need further attention and to take up any articles that we might not get through in this meeting, but we're going to try. Tonight, we're taking up the ones that really should get your consideration to vote for or against. Let's get this going so you can all feel safe and confident that our town can move forward. If it's okay with all of you, I'm going to set aside a lot of the traditional opening comments I like to share out of respect for everyone's patience. Some quick introductions, though, for new members of our town. Please raise your hand as I introduce you, so new members of our town can know who you are, even with a mask. Lydia Zisch, our town clerk. Tom Mullin, our town council. Over here's our Board of Select Persons, Diana Zinal, Chair, Brian Moriarty, and Ed Jaworski. The Finance Committee, our version of the Federal Reserve Board. Darrell Williams, Chair, Betsy Ryder, Sean Berry, Kim Baker, and Diane Brzezowski, who, by the way, just had a birthday yesterday, so happy birthday, Diane.[243.62][243.62](applause). And over here, we've got Marlene Marshansky, our administrative assistant, and Phil Genovese from the DPW head.
Sharon Strigowsky.
And Sharon Strigowsky. We all know Sharon.[258.32][258.32](laughing). Diana, you had something you need to do.
Good evening, everybody. We are pleased to dedicate this year's Hatfield Town Report to a person whose face is familiar to Smith Academy graduates and many who have served on boards and committees in town or have walked their dogs along Primrose Path. Francis Fran Gudgen claims many years of Hatfield service to his credit. A former Hatfield School Superintendent, interim superintendent, longtime finance and CIPC member, Fran has emerged several times from retirement to assist the town in choosing superior candidates for key Hatfield positions by volunteering for duty on screening committees. Though at times, town politics can be polarizing, Fran's insightful input and understated manner were the foundations for successful teamwork. His many contributions have not gone unnoticed, and we hope to show appreciation through this dedication. Thank you, Fran. You are wished many years of enjoyment, golfing, skiing, and the continued testing of your medal through parachuting, ziplining, and the like.[336.53][336.53](applause). Thank you. Normally, I'd hug you, but...[341.13][341.13](laughing).
Fran, this year sadly, you're missing a lot of hugs.
Fran's pretty amazing.
And Brian, you had something? Brian?
I did, actually. I just wanted to take a moment while we're all here and congratulate our superintendent, John Roberts, who will be retiring in just another week or two. I was fortunate enough when John was hired 10 years ago to be the chairman of the board, the school board, and I got to make the call after a screening process was taken. And there hasn't been a day that I haven't looked back, former and current school committee members haven't looked back and thought that we did anything other than make the right decision. The academics have improved over the last 10 years with additional revenues, the finances and the facilities have been able to improve, student enrollment has increased, and I didn't prepare a speech, but I thought that it was just the right thing to do to recognize Superintendent John Roberts, who will be retiring.[415.63][415.63](applause). Congratulations, John.[417.63][417.63](applause). Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Diana, let's take up Article 1 through 4, and I'm going to explain what is called a consent agenda. It allows us to include some articles into one vote, as they're the most standard and easiest ones we vote every single year. They will each be read in the motion, if she so chooses to, and we can answer to any of them if there are questions. These allow elections to take place next Tuesday, including to put a ballot question on there, not to approve the question at this point, but just to put it on the ballot, and the rest is to accept state money for schools and highways. So that's 1 through 4. So we're going to try to do that in one motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town take up Articles 2 through 4.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Articles 2 through 4, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move that the town vote to authorize Article 2 to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend without appropriation any state or federal grants and gifts and awards from any public or private source that become available in fiscal year 2021. I move that we approve Article 3 to authorize the Treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws. And I move that we vote in Article 4, excuse me, appropriate under Article 4 the sum of $241,514 for the town's transportation bond issue apportionment, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Massachusetts Department of Public Works pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 90.
You've heard the motions read and seconded for Articles 2, 3, and 4. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 5. Or, excuse me, I move we table Article 5.
There a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to table Article 5. Do we have discussion or no? Go ahead. Is there a discussion on this?
Not when it's tabled.
Not when it's tabled, okay. We can go to...
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Wait, wait, wait. Got to make a vote to table Article 5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 7.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to table Article 5. Do we have discussion or no? Go ahead. Is there a discussion on this?
Not when it's tabled.
Not when it's tabled, okay. We can go to...
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Wait, wait, wait. Got to make a vote to table Article 5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $33,466.83 for the falling fund balance deficits for prior year and to meet said appropriation from free cash. Rural education achievement program, $28,770.70. School lunch, $2,206. Spent, $2,490.13. Total special revenue fund balance, $33,466.83.
Second. You've heard the motion made and seconded in Article 6. These money issues are all recommended by the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? This is going to be a four-fifths vote, so I would be looking for, some of these are two-thirds and four-fifths, and if we can get a unanimous, that's great. If we don't, we're going to stop and have to do a count. That's your call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 7.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 7, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,503.40 for prior year expenses for various boards and departments and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second. You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 7, again recommended by the Finance Committee. Any discussion? Ed?
Last go, 136 Main Street. I'd just like to know why we keep going into this deficit or spending, deficit spending, because we've got a budget every year, we appropriate the budget, and every year we appropriate more money at the end of the year. Something's wrong here, because nobody's watching their budget or whatever's happening here, so I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that this is wrong, okay? You've got a budget, you stick by the budget, and that's what we appropriate, and every year we do the same thing, so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Any other discussion? This is again a four-fifths vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 8.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 8, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $54,560 to supplement the fiscal year 2020 school operating budget for unforeseen special education expenses and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
You've heard the motion of Article 8, you've heard the motion, Article, motion 8, read and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, she has a question. Lydia always keeps an eye on us.
Joe asked, I move to raise and appropriate, but you don't have to raise and appropriate because you're getting it from your cash.
Raising appropriate would be wrong.
Would be wrong. Raise and appropriate.
Okay. All right. So again, is there any discussion on Article 8? All those in favor? Yo, yo, come on up. I didn't hear you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this related to COVID-19?
So then, everybody can hear you.
Are these deficits in the school budget for special education? Susan Slush.
And just the street you live on, not the number.
Uh, Main Street.
Okay. Go ahead.
Are these deficits in the special education fund, are they related to COVID-19?
No.
No, they are not.
No.
They're not, okay.
They're not.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 9.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 9, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $150,162 to supplement the fiscal year 2020 operating budget for unforeseen expenses and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second. Ed, can you say how much that amount was again?
The amount of money again. Pretty, pretty...
What's that?
Repeat the amount of money.
It was, the amount is 151,162.
Okay. I, we're all muffled, so I apologize.
I'm fine.
All right. You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 9. Is there any discussion? Ed?
Someone could just give us an explanation of what the...
Sure. Thank you. So $93,000 is for snow and ice deficit. As you know, every year, there is a deficit created because of that, and so that covers that. And then, there's $58,162 that was needed for accounting services that we had to pay for to straighten out fiscal year 19.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 10.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 10, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 10.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 10, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1.6 million to the town's portion of a sewer and water infrastructure project for Route 5, with the balance of the expected $3.6 million cost anticipated to come from the Commonwealth. And to raise this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, provided that no bonds or notes shall be issued hereunder unless the town has voted at an election to exempt the amounts required to pay such bonds or notes from the provisions of Proposition 2.5. And provided further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved under this article, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, reducing the amount, oh, sorry, may be applied to the payment of costs so approved in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or any other town official to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this article.
Second. You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 10. Is there a discussion? Michael?
Mike Cahill, North Street. I'm trying to make this as simple as possible. I am in favor of the town's coming up with its portion of this project in order to attain this grant, project grant that's been awarded to the community, but what I'm not in favor of is that the debt on this article be a debt exclusion. Basically, what this means, for those of you who aren't familiar with debt exclusion, is that the principal payments, the debt and the principal and interest payments on this loan will be added to your taxes.
Michael, can you just cover, considering that we don't have to deal with the mic issue?
Yeah. So the principal, the debt, the debt burden on this loan will be added to our, to our taxes, therefore excluded from Proposition 2.5. That's what debt exclusion means. You know, for several years, I've been speaking with the Finance Committee, and I've, I've made overtures to them about a concept that I feel strongly that we should investigate. All of us probably understand what's meant by refinancing our mortgage. We currently have, as a community, $600,000 in this budget that's proposed tonight for principal and interest payments on our debt. Our total debt in the community is somewhere between $6 and $7 million.
But, Mike, you're starting to get out of the four corners of the article.
Well, I don't think so, Joe.
Well, you're getting into re-budgeting the whole town and the whole financial structure, and we're here to talk about an Article 10. Try to make it simple.
This is Article 10, and it's a debt exclusion issue that's, that concerns me because it means additional taxes. What I'm, what I'm suggesting, and I'm hoping that, that this be voted down so that we would encourage, that be an act that would encourage, as the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, to look at refinancing our debt, so that we could not only take on this debt, but also refinance the $6 or $7 million that we have, and believe it or not, we could actually end up taking on more than $7 million worth of debt, potentially allowing us to pay for the extension of the water line down to the center of town, the sewage treatment plant, and also the overages in the town hall. So I'm not in favor of this. I am in favor of Article 11, but I'm not in favor of a debt exclusion for this, because I think we can borrow this money along with other dollars and pay down our debt and take on additional major projects for the community without increasing our taxes.
Okay. Thank you. And I, just going to take a minute, Ed. Over the years, I've tried, I guess my role is to try to just educate a little bit, there's Prop 2.5 overrides, that taxes go up and stay up forever, and then there's the section called debt exclusion, and I learned this from when I was on finance years ago. A debt exclusion is, is the taxes go up until that debt is paid off, and when those debts are paid off, the taxes drop back down, and that disappears. That's why they've been much more appealing to towns, and I'm not saying that to waver anybody, I'm just, I like people to know, because we all hear 2.5 override, but we're not sure of what's, what's the body of it. Ed, you have a comment?
How much is it going to increase our taxes by? That's what I think everybody here should understand and know what it's going to increase and what the effects of it's going to be.
Can I speak to this?
Sure. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if this is... Is this on? Yes. Thank you. Okay. So, yes, Mike, your proposal for refinancing the debt actually is of great interest to us, and we have a new member of our Finance Committee, Kim Baker, who actually works in the banking industry, and that was her first observation. So you are correct that that's something that we want to pursue. As you may be aware, we have been struggling and we are now succeeding in getting our accounting together and accurate, and with the hiring of Melanson Heath Financial Services, we are excited to say that we actually know what our finances look like at this point, so that a potential lender might be very interested in talking to us about refinancing our debt. So that is not off the table. What I would say about a debt exclusion is that we still have the opportunity, even if this debt exclusion were passed, to go forward with refinancing the debt. So I understand your, your interest in having us look at that. I think now that our accounting issues are settling down, that is something we're going to be looking at. Who wouldn't want to pay less money for debt and get more out of it? So I appreciate that. I know that we're going to be asking tonight whether the town would support putting a debt exclusion on the ballot, and you will have your opportunity to individually vote on that, and if that's not the case, then we will have to figure out how to take out this loan and take it out within the, the structure of the operating budget, which would be within a very small amount of money that we get to use each year to finance the school and other departments. So anyway, yes, Mike, that's something we're going to be pursuing, and Kim's going to help us do it. And this is the answer to this question. Oh, Ed's question. Yes, so, thank you. So this debt exclusion would increase the tax rate by 16 cents per thousand. If the average home in Hatfield is now assessed at 325,000, the average yearly increase to each individual homeowner would be $52 a year for the next 30 years. That's in your, that's, that is a handout. And isn't the passage, both articles, give us the ability to...
We haven't gotten to that yet.
They can say no to one.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, all right. But it just is...
Joe, did you have a question? Did you have a question?
Any other comments, questions? Over here.
Christopher Smith, Prospect Street. Few months back, the Selectmen increased our water and sewer rates by 25% with the intent, I believe it was, to pursue grants. Is this connected to that at all? And if it was, if this was negotiated prior to that increase, would the Selectmen consider rescinding that increase considering the difficulty that a lot of people are having with the COVID crisis?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Smith? No, they are two separate items. One, the, the rate increase had to do about trying to receive grants and apply for grants and qualify for grants as it reflects, as it relates to the water and sewer system and the plant down on the center of town. This is completely different. This is a MassWorks grant that the current Board of Selectmen and prior Boards of Selectmen have worked very hard on over the last few years, as well as pretty much every department within town, to try to receive, to apply for and receive that $2 million grant. It is, you know, just do the math, right? $2 million is over 50% of the cost for improving the water structure down on Route 5. Increased water pressure, water, sewer, and so time is of the essence in, in the sense that the grant isn't going to just stay there waiting for us as a town to decide if we want to help support it. It's going to come and it's going to go if, if we aren't on board, so.
And just to speak to sort of additional benefits of the grant, one of the criteria for even qualifying for this grant was that we had to demonstrate that there was going to be economic development as a result of it and job creation. So, yes, there'll be a small amount on, on the tax bill for the life of the debt, but we will also expand our tax base with some commercial development out there and some, the creation of some really quality jobs. So there's, there's a lot of merits to this project.
Any other comments or questions? Over here.
John P. Snuff, Hatfield Road. I'd like to have everybody move this project ahead. It's going to cost money down the road next year if it's delayed. I was talking with a friend who works as contractors. He was working on a job. His boss told him that their company was outbid by $90,000 for another job. This is kind of the environment we're living in right now. Money's money for everybody type, but $90,000 for a big job, this is a state project that's, they're working on, 90,000. You know, it doesn't pertain to us here, but this, you know, between contractors and everything like that, it can get moved and get done quick and help people out there and businesses out there.
You know, John, you make me feel really old, because when I started doing this job 18 years ago, I used to call on your dad.[1678.58][1678.58](laughing).
Could I, could I just ask one more thing?
Sure.
I think that the, the numbers that the Finance Committee just gave in terms of the impact on the tax bill is really important, but I think it's also important for townspeople to hear, if we, if it's not a debt exclusion, what it does to the levy limit and our ability to fund budgets if the project comes out, is paid that way.
Okay. Ed, let me give Sandy a shot there, Ed, please.
Hi. Sandy Walsh, School Street. There's a couple of words different between Article 10 and Article 11, so before we vote So before we vote on 10, can, can some, I don't know anything about money and all of that debt exclusion. So what are the differences? And are there two amounts of 1.6 million?
No. So the way that we're, the way that we're doing this, because we have to make sure that we secure the grant, right? We can't take the chance of losing the grant. Article 10 will ask if we want to fund it through debt exclusion, which is what we're talking about. That would trigger it to be on the ballot. It's on the ballot when we go to the polls next Tuesday. Article 11 would be for us to borrow it and, and not put it on the tax bill, but then we would have to pay the, the debt out of our normal operating budget each year. And so they're both there. Frankly, if it fails at the ballot box, we would have to borrow. So we, this way, we won't take the chance of losing a $2 million grant. But it gives us both options. If the townspeople say they don't want to put $50 on their tax bill to fund this, then we would have to borrow and take it out of the budget every year, which is what I was hoping they would speak to, the impact on, on the levy limit. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments here in the back?
I'll speak to it if you want. It's, I mean, it's.
Well, wait a minute. He was going to have a comment and then you.
Oh, wait, okay.
William Bell in Pantry Road. Actually, I got a couple of things to say. One is, you're asking us people on septic systems to once again support the sewer system. And what do we get out of it? I have my tank pumped, they have to take it to Montague, I can't even bring it here. Why? Why aren't we doing something to help the townspeople in Hatfield? You're asking us to help pay for the plant, but we can't use it. And second thing I'd like to know is, how sure are we of this cost estimate? Because it seems like every project we do, we run short and we have to come back to town meeting. And I'm not going to support another one after this. I'll support this one, but after this, if we run short, I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
And did you want to make comments?
So to answer, I guess I can sort of answer both those questions, I guess. One is, there was a question about.
Sean, can you talk a little louder?
Sorry. There was a question about what impact this would have. It would, it would, and that's on your handout. So if it was a straight borrowing, it would have, it would impact the levy limit by decreasing the amount that we have to spend on operating expenses, because we'd be using any money that we normally spend on operating expenses to repay debt. So that's the downside of it. It would leave us about 105,651 in levy room each year, which is essentially the cost of doing business. We would go up that much if we did nothing, if we made almost no changes. Bare bones cola, possibly, the negotiated salaries that we have with our unions would eat most of that up and inflation. And I think just to answer the question about what do we get out of this, and, and as you know, members of the Finance Committee have been preaching about the sewer and water for years now, and especially the sewer. This year, there is an increase. The sewer system and the water system are enterprise funds, but they do not pay their expenses. They are, they are enterprise funds with a rich uncle, which is the town, which supports their activities. And so one thing this would do is it will expand the user base for the sewer system and hopefully help to get it to a point where it can make, meet more of its expenses in the future, so the town would have to kick in less over time. And it would also have the impact of increasing the tax base potentially and creating jobs. The Mass Works grants are given out based on your ability to create economic development with the project. So it increases the overall tax base potentially as well.
Thank you. You have one, shares a comment to make.
I have to come down here because I'm speaking as Lydia Zish of 449 Main Street, a citizen. I wanted to remind people that the residents that live along Route 5 and 10 in West Hatfield are citizens of the town of Hatfield. I grew up there and I have listened to town meetings, and I have heard several times people refer to the residents in West Hatfield or West Hatfield as not being a part of the town. It seems to be totally separate. I just want to remind everybody that it's one town, whether it's West Hatfield, North Hatfield, or Town Center. It's, we're all one town, and the, and the people, the residents that are going to benefit from this project, they're part of Hatfield. They're on septic systems now. They're going to benefit by this. So, and I can't speak up there because I'm not speaking as a town clerk. I'm speaking as a citizen born and raised in West Hatfield. Thank you.
I also think, I also think it's important to note that the economic development, the business expansion that we expect from this sewer project, are businesses that are going to be really good neighbors out there. They're not going to be really disruptive in terms of traffic or lights or anything like that. So it's really a, really a blessing that we have these businesses that want to come here, they want to expand here, and we have the Commonwealth stepping up to pay for more than half of this project.
Ed?
I just want to remind everybody, this town has always struggled to help with our tax base, and how do we do that? We try to bring in businesses and also preserve our farmland. So for the future generations to help with our tax base, if we don't bring in some more businesses, your taxes are going to rise. So this affects everybody in town and just not a couple few. So I just want you to think about the future. Do you want your taxes to rise, or do you want to bring in some businesses? Right now, Stibo is ready to build over there, and we have some other interests. I mean, and how else do you protect your farmland if 5 and 10 is not built on? That's all I want to say.
Okay, I'm going to move this along. I mean, as John asked, I'm going to move it along. We've talked, and we've got the whole next one to talk on. This has to be a, a 2/3 vote, or we have to do a count. So when it comes to that, I ask either we look to try to get unanimous, or we'll stop and do a count. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Is that two? That's a 2/3. I'm going to call that. I mean, there's, so I will say that Article 10 passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 11.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 11 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,600,000 for the purpose of funding the town's portion of a sewer and water infrastructure project for Route 5, with the balance of the expected $3.6 million cost anticipated to come from the Commonwealth. And to raise this appropriation, the treasurer would the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, provided that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved under this article, lest any such premium applied to the payment for the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs so approved in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and any other town official to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the purpose of this article.
You've heard Article, the motion on Article 11 made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 12.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 12 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $219,320 for the purpose of renovating the Council on Aging Center from an unexpected proceeds of a loan of $325,000, which was authorized under Article 2 of the warrant for the special town meeting of October 26, 2016, for a project which has not been completed and with respect to which no liability remains outstanding and unpaid on account thereof, and to discontinue the said project.
You've heard the motion made and seconded in Article 12. There you go.
Sean Robinson, 199.
Sean, just face up here, over here.
Sean Robinson, Lindsay Road, Chair of the COA Board of Directors. This is just a sort of cleanup article. This money has already been borrowed. You know, town already has the money. It was meant for the purposes of the COA. Initially, it was for things we were obligated to do as part of the town renovation project.
Sean, just a question. Can you cover your nose? I'm just, because I'm following Chief Bob's requirement. Thank you. Well, because I don't want to have to, the mic.
Sure.
You made me lose my.
I'm so sorry. I am so, so sorry.
Come on, Jeff. All right. So this money was coming to us anyway. We were meant to get it to do the elevator. There was some work being done with the elevator that impacted our section. So this money was to clean up our section. At the time, we said, there's lots of other things that need to be done at the COA. The town told us this is the priority first, because we're obligated to do it. We will take care of everything else, like the, we will take care of everything else, like the falling ceilings later. Now's that later. This money was left over from that same pool, so this is no new money. It was there. It was dedicated to the COA. The COA needs it, as many of us have seen. You know, you see spotted ceilings. Some of the work that needs to be done with this money is still directly related to the project that was done, you know? So major construction has happened down there, and there's no money allocated to paint the walls after that major construction, you know, like with all kinds of things coming down. So this money is going to go to tackle that and some other basic improvements that will allow us to remain in the COA for the foreseeable future. And I think, you know, after the last few town meetings, that's where people seem to want to be for now. So this keeps us from buying a new building next year, 2, 3, 4, and it makes the Council on Aging building as it exists now, something that we can work with. So should be a quick question.
You make me smile, because John was on the Finance Committee for quite a few years, did really well. Now he's on the COA, learning whole new sections, and here we are talking about masks and noses.
I just wanted to make one comment. The reason we were giving Sean a hard time is because actually there's town meeting laws that when you're speaking at town meeting, you're actually speaking to the moderator. So that's why we require you to face front and speak to the moderator. You're not supposed to turn around and speak to the.
And that, that came because over years and years of learning, there were some people that would turn and face the people, and they're, they're very good orators, but they would be looking at people and making people very uncomfortable. I guess it's like, I hope nobody hears a car salesman, but I guess like talking to a car salesman, it's really hard to say no. Ed?
What I'd like to know, Sean said that the $219,320 is left over, but left over from what? Because if it was left over, it would be taken from an article and transferring it into this sum of money of $325,000. The way this is worded, it looks like it's coming directly from free cash or available surplus.
He's right behind you.
So Ed, the reason this is transferable in this way is because the original wording of the First Amendment was related to the same area, related to renovations. It was supposed to be spent on the Council on Aging. So this is just saying, we spent less on doing the stairway. We now want to spend some money on some other improvements. Is that okay with the town with the same pool of money? Because it's so close, the, the type of project. Now, that's my understanding of it. So why is the money left over? It's the second egress. So we wanted the second egress that exists into the COA section, we wanted that to remain the same. Unfortunately, due to the architect, architect or whatever, that couldn't stay the same. We still wanted a second egress because we think it's important to access in the COA. So we worked with the Board of Selectmen. We came to terms with a smaller second egress that came from the back of the building that still accomplished our needs of emergency exit on the down, on the downstairs floor that didn't require an elevator, but saved a ton of money. Now, that ton of money is perfect for what we're doing right now, because we had been coming to you year after year, saying the COA space is falling apart. And for years, we were told, we will get to it, we're going to do the upstairs first. Now's an opportunity to take money that we already voted on, we already approved, we borrowed, use that to fix the space, and be done with this. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other discussion? Okay, this is again a 2/3 vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Zaino.
I move we take up Article 13.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 13 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Zaino.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $131,517 for the purpose of paying unforeseen costs associated with the Phase 2 Memorial Town Hall Building Improvements Project by transferring $70,000 from the Town Stabil, Town Hall Stabilization Fund and $61,517 from the following sums, which are available from prior funding authorizations. Annual Town Meeting, May 2017, Article 17, Memorial Town Hall Front Steps and Railing, the amount of $24,469.50. Annual Town Meeting, May 2012, Article 26, Town Hall Entryway, the amount of $21,047.50. Annual Town Meeting, May 2017, Article 16, Feasibility Study of the Council on Aging, Museum and HCTV Studio, the amount of $16,000.
You've heard the motion read and seconded under Article 13. Is there any discussion? Michael.
Mike Cahill, North Street. Quick question. As recently as a couple of days ago, I saw a draft of the budget, which showed this number to be $488,000. So could someone let us know why this is only 131 now, and are these all of the unforeseen costs that are left over? So what happened to the other 300 and some odd thousand?
That's what happens when you look at a draft. I know, I get it, I get it.
I would let Mr. Jaworski and Marlene, who did the bulk of the work on this, they went through the budget, they figured out where the overruns were, and they were the ones that did, did the work on this, and we are not as over as we originally thought. So we will no longer have to borrow additional money to pay for that.
As you know, this project, this project started eight or nine years ago, and the project was to bring, we had to bring the whole building up to code. In order to do that, to give a little background, we had to be code compliant. We had to put a new electrical system in, a new fire protection sprinkler system in, a new elevator in, and a handicap accessible ramp. We had to fix that. Well, at the very beginning of this project, if you recall, we had a special town meeting. There was two articles, one passed, one did not. So when this project started, the first thing that happened, even though we had $100,000 contingency to start with, when this project started, we had to first redo the blueprints for about 30 grand. Then when the project started, they, the elevator code's now required an MDC trap to be put outside. What that trap is, you have to dig a big concrete container outside of Town Hall, put it in the ground, pipe it back to the elevator pit in case there's any hydraulic fluid or contaminants, and that was another 46 grand. And then when they did the, dug the pit for the elevator shaft, you had, that used to be for the kitchen for the whole school. So all that sewer pipe that was in the ground was all, had holes in it. It all had to be replaced, which meant digging up the floor to the outside, replacing that. And when we did that, that kicked off another code on the sink, which had to be changed. When the elevator also went downstairs, there was a whole bunch of cobweb of wiring, which had to be code corrected. And the fire pump room, when they took out the cell and they found a circuit that went to the backstage, and that had to be corrected. And the COA area, they found insulation in the ceiling and with sprinkler pipes, that had to be corrected. So all these things cost. Now, as far as the 400, I'm not sure. We went through the numbers, and we found out it's not the four or something. It's, it's this 131,517. Okay? So I mean, I, that's how, I just want to explain to everybody the cost overruns and what's happened on this project. And this project, again, after eight or nine years, the costs keep going up, and every time we turn around, we have to do another code compliant thing. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
Ed, I wasn't, don't get me wrong. I, I'm not, I wasn't here complaining about everything that had to be done to the Town Hall, because I understand that there are overruns and there are changes that have to be made and change orders. I was just wondering what happened to the 350 grand. And apparently, we found money somewhere, and it's great that we don't have to borrow.
We found that number not to be correct, Mike.
Okay, any other comments on this?
We found a number not to be correct.
So a piece of this is the feasibility study that's getting, not going ahead? Is that what I understand? I didn't get a handout, so, all right.
Well, under the feasibility study, we've already met with the Council of Aging, and they gave an idea of what they want and how they want everything laid out. So if they already know how they want everything laid out, why have a, that was sort of the study to find out what they wanted.
Yeah, but there was also the museum, the TV studio, there was a, it, it, these, the intent of that feasibility study was much broader than just COA. It had to do with what happens in the next three to 25 phases that we're going to do. Okay? So I'm wondering why are we, uh, there was a, we voted this money for this purpose because we really put the cart before the horse, even in Phase Two. A lot of Phase Two, I agree, was housekeeping that should have been done in Phase One. I'll give you that. But if we're going forward with the Town Hall, I think that study was, was very important because if we're thinking about the future uses of that, especially the second floor and so on, we don't want to just sort of say, oh, well, we don't have any plan. We need a plan. We should have had a plan before. We should have had a plan in Phase One.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 14.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 14 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues or available funds in the following amounts, recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriation from fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, Reserves from fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $24,000. From fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $24,000. From fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues for open space reserve, $24,000. And from fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, $159,750.
Motion's been made and seconded as Article 14 in your handout. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I make a motion to take up Article 15.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 15 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to set the spending limits for the revolving fund under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 2020, as printed in your handouts.
And you can take, you can take a minute to look at that in your handout. You second that, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes trying to read a whole chart, just, we lose it. So as we go at this, Article 15 has been seconded, and is there any discussion?
I apologize, I have to make an estimate on how many everyone will show up, and I don't always get it right.
Okay. Michael?
Chris, can I have that back?
Are, are any of these?
Chris, you just said she needs that back when you're done peeking through it.
What, what? Are any of these new? And, uh, have any of these amounts increased from this year?
Is anybody here from Community Preservation? Nope. Nope, I guess not.
This isn't.
I mean, I'm sorry. Revolving fund, my apologies. Glasses start fogging up.
Tax title, like, new this year, isn't it, Sharon?
This is year two.
This is year two. Okay, nothing new.
Nothing new. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 16.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 16 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $11,424,474 for inconsistent with separate purposes and separate line items set forth in the version of the FY 2021 budget prepared by the Finance Committee, approved June 11th, 2020, and on file with the Town Clerk, and to meet said appropriations as follows. From taxation, $10,084,975. From Cable TV Enterprise Fund, $65,000. From Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, $819,895. From ambulance revenue, $74,104. From ambulance surplus, $20,000. From school choice, $12,000. From cemetery perpetual care interest, $500. And from free cash, $348,000.
You've heard the motion made in Article 16. Now, this is the budget itself. You have it in your handout, and generally what we do is we take the items, oh, 114 on this listed here, boy, they've gone up over the years, all the way up to the end of 425, I think it, the tree warden was added. So just take, take a few minutes and you can look through. Um, I will just mention, you know, and let's see if there's any questions that come up on those pages. This is the one that says budget approved June 11th, 2020.
It's, it's.
June 11.
It's the last section of the.
And it's the last section of the handout.
You're right, Sharon.
The last pages of the handout is the budget.
Page 11.
You're right, Sharon, it's page 11, 12, 13, and 14.
That's just 11 on the whole budget, that's not 11 on this. But it has 11 at the bottom.
You'll see, uh, the first line is 114. I have to say, if you approve it, thank you, I get a $2 raise, so, you know, I'll be the sacrificial lamb on this. But just to identify the page. Ed?
Could somebody explain to us what the, uh, elected officials' salaries are? Because they're not, the selectmen are, but none of the other ones are. I guess Marlene said she had the other ones, like Planning Board, uh, assessors and Board of Health, what, what are all those? Um, we're not broken down, what the chairman gets, what the other two members get.
I think you asked this last time, but I, I don't know if they broke it down.
I did, and it's not, it's not laid out here.
I don't know if they had it broken down that way.
Marlene has it.
Okay.
Do you want this, Marlene? Marlene, do you, oh.
So as you see, the selectmen's, that is their current stipend under 122. Joe, you had mentioned yours. The assessor's chair currently receives annually $2,174.64, and two members each receive $1,805.40. Board of Health Chair receives annually $5,144.88, and two members each receive $4,929.66. The planning board, each member receives annu- annually $818.44.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know you've got a lot to do, but you've come prepared. I appreciate it. Any other questions? On the budget? Michael?
On the section that deals with general fund debt, uh, I don't know what page it is.
We're only on page 11.
Oh, I thought you were going through all the budget.
No, we're just going.
Well, I'm.
You're just on page 11?
You, well, I just said 11, 12, 13, and 14 at this point, so I'm, I'm going through the, the, the first four at this point. Those are more of the.
I guess it's page 16. Um, the.
We're only up to 11 to 14 at the moment.
Okay, so, all right, because you just said, are there any other questions?
So if there's no other questions on 11 to 14, then yes, we can move to the other ones. Okay. All right, so let's move on to 15, 16, 17, and 18. How you can come up?
Um, on page 16, uh, just curious, the, the principal interest payments on the Town Hall renovations Phase Two, uh, is that debt a 20-year loan or a 10-year? What, what is it? It's, the principal payment is 132.5 on one line and then 39,000 on the other. So what, what's the maturity timeframe on that debt? Is anyone else?
I think it's, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm pretty sure Sharon, North Street, uh, whatever I am, um, but it's a 20-year loan.
That's a 20-year?
I believe so. I didn't bring that particular thing, but off the top of my head, I think it's 20.
Because if it's a 20-year loan and we're paying 132,000 a year, that's $2.6 million, that one line item alone. So that's, that's what I'm kind of questioning. Town Hall Phase Two is not costing $2.6 million, so. So maybe it's a 10-year?
I don't think it's a 10-year. I don't remember.
All right. Any other, any other questions moving on to these four pages? Okay. Let.
Really?
That's okay. Let's do 19 and 20. Hmm? 19. Okay. Is there any other questions on the budget items? And, and knowing we're going to have to meet in the fall and probably touch on some of these because I know they've kept it pretty bare bones what they could. Uh, my, I, I apologize, but we did have a plane going or a helicopter going over. All right, on Article 16, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 17.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 17 in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 75, excuse me, 7B.5 of the zoning bylaws concerning standards and conditions for marijuana establishment by the below that's in your handout.
Brian, I, I'm actually going to ask you to read it.
Okay.
Apparently some people didn't get the handout.
Oh, okay.
Because I estimate how many people I think might show.
That's fine. Not a problem.
That's cool.
Not a problem, I'll read it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, so there's two, there's an A and a B. So A, inserting a new subsection E, which will read, "No marijuana cultivation, whether outdoors or in a greenhouse," Table of Use Regulations 3.11 and 3.12, shall be located, I, in a rural residential, outline residential, town center, or business districts within 500 feet of any pre-existing residential use, Table of Use Regulations 1.0, located on a lot that is not under common ownership with the lot on which the marijuana establishment is proposed, or II, in the agricultural, AG district with 300 feet of such a use. No such setback shall apply with respect to marijuana cultivators located in the industrial and/or light industrial districts. The distances under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the residential building to the nearest point of the security fencing associated with the proposed marijuana cultivator. And B, relettering the existing subsections E through N so that they will be identified as subsections F through O respectively. So. There's a second. Okay. So there you go. You've heard the motion made for Article 17 and seconded. Is there any discussion? Bob?
Bob Wagner Lindsay wrote, um, on the current chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board, working with the Town Council, um, came up with this amendment to our current zoning bylaws regarding marijuana establishment, particularly cultivation outdoors and in the greenhouse, uh, in response to the feedback that we received for a project that was proposed, uh, under our current zoning bylaw. We feel that what we presented here is fair to, uh, to the neighbors and residents within these districts, and also to, um, uh, encourage, uh, such establishment of marijuana cultivation in our agricultural zone, and certainly, uh, in the industrial and light industrial zone, in keeping with the current setbacks that are already in our bylaws for both of those districts. So we would hope that everyone would, uh, support this, uh, this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions if people have specific ones.
Thank you very much. Bob, why don't you stay a little close because, Bob, just behind you.
Martha Siz Elm Street. My question is, you've laid out all the places that cannot be grown. I've lived here for 30, 40 years. I can't in my mind even picture where can it be grown? Because all you said is no, 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 no. So just, just an example, where in this town could it be grown?
Bob will answer that.
It can actually be grown in any one of the rural residential, outline residential, or town center, or business zones if it's, uh, further than 500 feet from a pre-existing residential use. It can be grown in, uh, in, in the agricultural zone, which, for example, is in the flats back over here to the south, and also the flats, uh, up to the north along Main Street on the Whately Line, if it's, uh, not within 300 feet of a pre-existing residential use. And it can be grown in the industrial or light industrial districts, many of which are between North Hatfield Road and Route 5 and 10, and there is some light industrial also along Route 5. So there are a number of places where it could be grown, but what we want to do is make sure that, in light of the feedback, again, that we received from this project that was proposed last year, that we are respecting, uh, the proximity of the cultivation operations from pre-existing residential uses.
Thank you, Bob. Mike?
Good question for Bob. This says it's submitted by the Planning Board. Is the Planning Board recommending this? Have they approved it?
So the Planning Board held a public hearing, as is required by state law, at which time we voted unanimously to advance this, uh, article to Town Meeting tonight.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article, motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 18.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 18 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to amend the table of uses and the zoning bylaws by moving the entries for minimum ground mount solar generating system and large ground mount solar generating system from Section 6.0 of the said table entitled Accessory Uses to Section 5.0 thereof entitled Wholesale Transportation and Industrial Uses, and renumbering them from 6.25 and 6.26 to 5.31 and 5.32 respectively.
You've heard the motion made on Article 18. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Our, motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 19.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 19 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,725 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve account to be used to preserve and restore historic town vital records under the direction of the Hatfield Town Clerk, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 19. You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 19. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 20.
Motions were made and seconded?
Second.
To take up Article 20 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $36,438 from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account to rehabilitate recreational land by creating a public pavilion at Smith Academy Park at the corner of School Street and Main Street under the direction of the Hatfield Open Space Committee. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded, read and seconded under Article 20. Is there any discussion?
Rich Abbott, Chair of the Open Space Committee, Elm Street. I just wanted to point out that last year's Town Meeting, $60,000 was approved of CPA funds for the pavilion construction. Town Meeting also approved to submit a grant to the state for around $50,000 to, to complete the funding for the pavilion. We had previously got a $50,000 grant for the landscaping work that was done. Unfortunately, this time around, we did not get that second $50,000 grant. So we're back asking for additional CPA funds, $36,000, which will add it to the $60,000, will get us to the $96,000, which is the budget for the project. We also have a few thousand dollars of funds we've raised through an adopt a bench at Smith Academy Park. And there are still some more benches available. If anyone's interested, go to the Town website, the Open Space Committee page, and there's a more information application.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, if, if this is approved, we're hoping to go out to bid for the pavilion this summer and build in the fall, hopefully.
But what about our cake? Bobby? Any other discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. I just want to say, Community Preservation, I, I saw the other day, many towns get like a 30, 35% kick in or help from the state. You guys have gotten like 80, 85%, and it's pretty impressive for such a little town. You must have worked very hard at it. So thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Sinno.
I move we table Article 21.
Motion's been made and seconded to table Article 21. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Mori, Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 22.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 22 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to hear any and all reports which have to do with the welfare of the town.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 20, where am I at here, 22. Is there any discussion? Wait, and Bob was going to say, and then you can go next.
Bob Wagner Lindsay wrote, "We're all here because of their very strange circumstance in which we now find ourselves. But I just want to say, as I sit here and look out across this beautiful field towards the Holy Oak Range, and on such a gorgeous night as we have tonight, you folks have done a phenomenal job being able to bring us together to have Town Meeting and be able to look out here. It's great to look at the signs that we have in the gym, but to be able to look out here and appreciate what a beautiful place we live, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much."
Thank you.
I would like to, you know, just talk a little bit about the Hatfield 350th, which we should be really in the throes of right now. And we've had to change some things and delay some things. I want to recognize the 350th Committee. Ed is here as a chair, I see Bobby Vetzal. I know Stephanie Slish is back there. I hope I don't miss anybody. But there's been a lot of work required to sort of make the changes that we need to make so that everybody can safely enjoy this, particularly the parade next year on May 30. So we will get around to celebrating when it's safe and appropriate to do so, and we appreciate your patience with all of that.
I just wanted to remind everyone that the annual election is next Tuesday. I want to thank all of you that have already voted by mail. We have almost 350, I think we've surpassed 350 applications that we have out for voting by mail. So it's been very, very successful and well-received. If you still want to vote by mail, I've been bringing the ballots right to the post office, asking them to keep them in town. So there is a very quick turnaround. You can get an application at either post office or on our website. If you go to the news feed, see all, and then scroll down, you'll eventually see it. There's a lot of news in there. So I want to thank everybody for helping out to keep us all safe and encourage anyone that wants to come to the election that we're going to take all the precautions we have to, to keep everyone safe at the elections as well. So thank you.
And when you do your mail-in ballot, there, there's a nice new box right on the side of the Town Hall at the new entrance, and you can just put them right in there and, and get it to them the same day. I just want to say that I hope you all get to celebrate Father's Day.
I just want to say, the ballots have to be back as late as 8 o'clock, by 8 o'clock, the night of elections. So at 8 o'clock, I have to go out to that drop box and make sure no one's put in a ballot at 5 of 8. So if you can get them in early, I'd appreciate it.
John, you have something?
Yes, I'd like to ask Board Chairman, where is our American flag and the state flag? We have Chief DeKochek wearing US flag on the shoulder.
You mean at the Town Hall?
The Town Hall, it can be brought out.
Okay. And, and for here, it's probably our oversight with setting up, and I apologize.
Everything else is set up.
You're right.
But the American flag is a louder strife nowadays.
You're right, well taken. Well taken.
The flag day ceremonies, we burned up a lot of flags to pay respects to holiday worship.
Absolutely correct, John.
I think it's a.
Thank you for reminding us. You're right. I hope you all get to celebrate Father's Day in whatever way makes you happy. One favor to ask is let's pray and hope for rain. I know we didn't want any today, but our farms really need it. It's way too dry. Can we have a moment of silence for so many that are having and have had such difficulties this year that are unprecedented at our time? The challenges globally, locally, and personally need to find a peaceful outcome, and this will take all of us working together. As I like to say, communication, not separation. And let's never forget our veterans, past and present, as well as those serving who can't be with their families. So if we can just take a moment of silence as we think of all of them, please. I just want to say, thank you for coming.
Joe? Sorry, I was, I was trying to get your attention before. I just have one more thing. Is that okay? I just want to explain, we, we tabled that article about changing Hatfield Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, only because we, there's actually a little bit more homework and preliminary work we need to do on that before we can move it forward. That most certainly will be coming forward at a future Town Meeting.
And, and, and there's a reason for it.
Right. Yeah, there's a reason for it.
John, I just want, I just wanted to apologize because it's actually Mike and Joe's job to set up Town Meeting. And it wasn't anything we did on purpose. It was just an oversight, and I apologize. I don't usually have to think about the flag when it comes to Town Meeting, because it's always there. So again, I apologize, but it was not something done on purpose. It was really just an error on my part. So I apologize.
And to clear, to clear up the question on the Select Board, and actually it was interesting to hear the two ladies discuss it because we all want it. We all just want to switch the name from selectmen. But with the presidential election coming and all the paperwork and all the zoning things that have to be done, changing that is going to put Lydia through a tremendous amount of effort. So it was worked out between two women, all of us men stayed way back. And, and to do this into next year is going to be a whole lot less stress. Yes, Diane?
And, and you know, we very appropriately recognize police fire and ambulance because of everything that's been happening. But I really want to recognize the Board of Health because the, the COVID crisis has been really just, just unbelievable. As we all know, we're living with it. But the response that's been required from our Board of Health, it has been tremendous. And, and they have just done a great job.